For that delicious lunch, so we can get through the rest of the day here. We had a motion by Councilwoman Whitehorse before we went into lunch to move up the discussion, the resolution for the church mission registration. So Councilwoman Whitehorse, do you have that ordinance or that resolution, excuse me?
No, I don't. That's why I just asked the secretaries to pass it out.
Secretary, do you have the ordinance or the resolution? Sorry, I keep calling it ordinance. For the for the church and mission registration? So Councilwoman, while she's pulling that up, I know there was also a motion from last Friday. Was that to have the Dream Center come to this meeting? Am I correct, or is my memory wrong?
I think it was to have that investigated with their involvement in the distribution of the pamphlets and the relationship with, what was his name? Matthew Manford or Monford, whatever his name was.
I do know we have some representatives from the Dream Center, and also we have a council representative from the Northern Arapaho here on their behalf. So I don't know if we want to allow the investigation to happen and not hear that, or if you want to give them time.
Have you assigned somebody to do the investigation? Because I know the council did not assign anyone specifically.
I have not personally. I don't know if President Killer has. So if you guys want to do that now, we can do that as well. Councilman Carlo?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I believe, are we going to give the Dream Center the floor first?
That is up to you all.
I believe they're here, so we may as well go with them first.
Okay, Councilman Rodriguez, and then we'll give the Dream Center the floor.
Well, I was just gonna back up what she said.
Okay, all right. Councilman Carlo, do you have a, oh, you're pointing over here. So yeah, the Dream Center and Councilman Spoon Hunter, there's a table up here with a microphone. Please feel free to come up and address the council. Thank you. Councilman Canoyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, you know, I think we need a little clarification if we can ask whether or not the investigation's been done.
I don't think you all assigned anybody, and like I said, I didn't, and I don't know if President Killer did. So I'm assuming that it has not been done. Have you guys been approached for an investigation? You guys have, who approached you guys for the investigation? You just press a button.
They, I'm sorry. We spoke to them yesterday, and they said it was going to the Central Intelligence because of the bus being shattered. So Central Intelligence was doing an investigation. Is that the investigation you mean?
No, I believe council requested an investigation into the Dream Center. So that's a separate one. So nobody else has approached you for an investigation?
No, not that I, yeah.
Councilman Jumping?
Well, Friday, when all that took place, we stopped out there, I and Councilman Canoyer, and we were allowed in the building, but I mean, we walked around the building, but we didn't do an investigation. But I mean, that's as far as that went. And to my knowledge, you know, I mean, I think we need to assign someone to investigate. You know, there's just too much, it's just not good. If we need to do that now, we need to, I don't know who we could get to do that. But also, you know, the sheriff was called for Oglala Lakota County, and he was there. And he walked and looked around too, but, you know, it wasn't a thorough investigation. We just did a walk around of the place. But I don't know, we should do that now before we even hear from them that we have something in place so we could have someone do the investigation on if they're associated with Mr., whatever his name is.
Monford. Okay, so do you guys want to assign someone to do that investigation? Councilman Yellowboy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we should have assigned that individual before council's over on Friday. And if it be your office, the fifth member, you know, just so, we should have, and that should have been done, and we could have had that answered today before we heard from the Dream Center. So that way, we have our ducks in a row in trying to figure out where information was given. I mean, and that's the biggest thing, is information should have been given to us today prior to them coming. And I know people are outraged, and I feel your frustration because I got the calls. I had people call me late at night saying, "We're going to go out there and help them move." But, you know, frustrations are high. You know, and yesterday's ordeal with the Pope getting a headdress, this adds fuel to people's frustrations. So I think if need be, I'll make that motion to place that investigation with the fifth member and have that brought back to us.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to place the investigation in the fifth member's office to carry out, a second by Councilwoman Carlo. Councilman Carlo, did you have a question?
I believe that we should have public safety involved in this also. So if he would amend his motion to include not only the fifth member's office, but public safety, I feel better doing it that way because I think that there could be more involvement out there across other Native reservations that needs to be investigated fully. So I would recommend that we involve public safety in that too.
Do you?
So with that, I would hope that public safety, with them being short, being able to ask one of their investigators to be, you know, with their short staffed as it is. But I'll amend that to add that to my motion.
Okay, second, or do you agree with that? Okay, Councilman Rodriguez, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, my only comment is on the investigation, that it be focused on their involvement, if any, with Mr. Monford, just for clarification, that they're not involved with him in any way, shape, or form. I mean, that's what's being said and put out there, that they are. They allowed him on the reservation. They allowed him to do what he's doing. So we need to make sure that if there's any involvement, that it's dealt with directly and swiftly. If there isn't, that that be handled the same way. So with that, that would be my direction for that.
Councilman Yellowboy, do you want to take into consideration Councilman Rodriguez's direction on that?
Well, not, I mean, I agree, but at the same time, it was just brought to my attention that it being deeded land, does our public safety have authority on that deeded land? Do we need to, because we're only over civil matters. So maybe we should assign, take that out and put the county sheriff in there.
So we, we have Councilman Puyer, and then I'll come back to you, Councilman Carlo.
That's what I was gonna say. I think we need to get the sheriff. Maybe it needs to be the appropriate entities to investigate because doesn't the county have a, like Attorney General, or do they have, I wonder if they have criminal investigations? I don't know what the county has. Because my, one of the, I remember if it was a text or an email from President Killer saying that that gentleman lives in Oral. But that doesn't mean he doesn't come down here, but evidently somebody checked him out, and he lives supposedly in Oral. I don't know, but I don't know how far our CI's can go. That's why I'm saying the county has to be involved somehow.
Thank you for that, and thank you, everyone, for your discussion on that. I think having the fifth member identify appropriate entities to investigate, that may be, just identifying appropriate entities to investigate may be the way to have the fifth member go. Yeah, Councilman Yellowboy, did you have a response to that?
I was just gonna amend my motion to have the fifth member assigned to this and give him the authority to contact and initiate the initial, the respective entities that he needs to conduct this investigation. So that's my amendment to the motion.
Thank you. Councilman Carlo, did you have anything else to add to that, or?
I was gonna agree specifically with, you know, with what he's saying today because I think that would give the fifth member all the authority that he needs to contact whatever law enforcement, you know, Attorney Generals, whatnot, to proceed with this investigation. So, you know, I think we're going on the right track right now, and I'm all for that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Steele.
You know, when we were sitting in the treasurer's office the other day, Councilwoman Carlo showed me, and it was a reminder about four years ago, the same pamphlet that was dispersed or handed out, you know, that they were, they were giving those out to inmates at the correctional facility. So I think it would be a good idea for someone to go out to the correctional facility and see who those individuals were that were taking those around to our inmates out there. Because this was four years ago, same wording on the same document. And that'll kind of get an idea of who this guy's connected to and where he's coming from.
Thank you, Councilman Steele. So any other questions or comments before we run the vote? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey? Ron DeBrey? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior? Richard Ironclad?
No.
Yes, yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Councilor passes 17 yes, one no, one not voting. Councilman Yellowboy?
Thank you, Madam Vice. I'd also like to entertain a motion, if it's okay with the Chair of the Law and Order Committee, to have a special session on the 10th to bring these findings back and report back to council.
If they're done.
Well, two weeks should be sufficient enough time, so.
So Councilman, or Chairman Watkins, is that okay with you, or yes?
The 10th is on a Wednesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Yellowboy to bring back the findings on August 10th. We have a second by Councilwoman Carlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Councilor passes 18 yes, one not voting. I don't know, Secretary, if you've gotten that out. And also, just to the Dream Center, I don't know who told you guys to come, but there is an investigation.
Ryan Jumping Eagle told us to be here at 11:00, and so we had Chairman, former Chairman, Lee Spoon Hunter drove all this way. So I know that you all, I just want two minutes to say, I know that you've already seen the bad stuff, but you haven't allowed us to even do anything.
Yeah, the investigation will also look into that, so I'm sure they'll be contacting you. And Councilman Spoon Hunter, thank you for coming all the way over here, and it does show support, and I'm sure they'll be contacting you as well, because I do know that was in question. So that's probably why they reached out to you. So the investigation will be coming on, and then I'm gonna go to Councilman Jumping Eagle, and then I'll come over to you. Councilman Jumping Eagle?
Yeah, I did ask them to come, because in the motions on Friday, they were to be here. So when I, we went and talked with them, I told them that's the action we took on council that day.
That was my recollection as well, but since we didn't clarify the investigation, we have done that today. It's up to you all, if you want to hear from them. They are here. It's totally up to you. If you guys want the investigation, to go ahead and look into that before we hear from them, so it's non-biased, it's totally up to you. So Councilman Carlo, and then Councilwoman Carlo.
I believe today that, you know, as relatives, you know, Councilman Spoon Hunter, you know, we should hear from him. And I believe all of our members, our relatives that are here today, I think they want to hear too. And if he has any information, you know, from his reservation that he wants to share with us, I think we need to weigh all of this out, but I believe him traveling this great distance today that we should allow him the time to talk today.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. You know, I agree with allowing Mr. Spoon Hunter to speak, but I also feel that we have our own people here who would like to speak too, whether they have a spokesman for the group, and if they do, I believe it's fair to hear from them as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that, yeah, and we were anticipating discussion on this. This is a topic that we should discuss, and we should have an open conversation about. You know, we have seen a lot, and it was, it was, you guys called an emergency meeting the day it happened, and we know the importance of it. We also know the importance of hearing from our community. You know, people's belief and way of life and spirituality, all those things are very near and dear to us. And we need to have those conversations so we can move forward together as relatives, like Councilman Carlo said. So I don't know, Councilman Carlo, if you want to entertain a motion to hear from the Dream Center. I know we did say to come, but we're confused about that motion from last Friday, so.
You know, the motion I made last week in our special meeting, you know, on Mr. Manford, you know, to remove him physically from our reservation, was a unanimous vote of our council. And today, I do believe that, you know, we do need to have an open mic, but I would say that my motion is to allow our relative, Mr. Spoon Hunter, time. And if there are spokespeople from our relatives here, then we allow them the same opportunity.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second, a second by Councilman Watkins? Can we also add some parameters on there, that this is a discussion? We are not here to argue or anything like that, so we can have some parameters around the discussion?
You know, I would not guarantee anything. There might be something said today that could be totally offensive, but, you know, I'm hoping today that, you know, we are civil today in how we address this. But believe me, I think, you know, one of Cora's motions on all of the other churches too, I believe maybe that investigation should include all churches on our reservation, that we investigate all of them, not just one. And I think today, on our reservation, we have more church groups today than we ever had on our reservation. I never remember Mennonites ever being here. We have Mennonites here today. You know, and I am sick and tired of churches going out soliciting money because of the poor Native Americans. You know, we, we might be poor, but I'm gonna tell you one thing. Each and every person in here is proud of their heritage, and that's what I gotta say.
Okay, well, I will be running the meeting, so I will set some parameters, but I do hear you. We're gonna open up the mic and let people talk. One thing I think is the distinction is, those of us who are born Oglala and Lakota and whatever indigenous background, that is who we are. And our way of life is our way of life. It's not a religion. It's our way of life. And I think we've distinguished that last Friday. And, you know, these pamphlets that we see going around, they're trying to make it a religion, and it's trying, but it's our way of life. And I think that is a distinction. We all know, we all know who we are. We all know who our ancestors are, and what we value, and what we believe, and how we walk in this world together as Oglala and as Lakotas. So I want to make that distinction, because there are religions and spiritualities and things like that, but this is our way of life. So I want to make that distinction as we go into this discussion, that we all, we all know that, right? Those folks who aren't Oglala or Lakota don't understand that. But we know, and that is our foundation of the discussion. So I wanted to keep that in mind as we move into the discussion and this, opening up this mic. I did see Councilman Rodriguez. No?
Could we do a 10-minute maximum?
10-minute maximum? Okay, all right, you're putting some parameters. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Carlo, and who was the second again? Was it Council, Councilman Watkins? Okay, any other questions or discussion before we move into giving Councilman Spoon Hunter the mic and opening it up? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior?
How?
Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Councilor passes 18 yes and one not voting. So with that, we'll turn it over to you, Councilman Spoon Hunter. Thank you for being here.
I would like to introduce him as Lee Spoon Hunter. I've known him since he was 14 years old. And so I'd like to introduce him as the tribal council on the Northern Arapaho tribe, and he was also the former chairman of the Northern Arapaho tribe. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, and distinguished members of the council here and also on Zoom, it is an honor and a privilege to be able to address you all today. I am a Northern Arapaho from Wind River. I have been able to serve as, you know, privileged and honored to serve as a co-chairman, a chairman, and now as a councilman. And I come here with a deep honor and respect for the Oglala Lakota. You know, as history will tell, we are ally tribes, the Northern Arapaho, the Lakota, and the Cheyenne. And I just want to thank you again today for your hospitality. I enjoyed a great meal. I thank the cooks for cooking for us. And I come in peace and with deep respect for all of you, to your homeland here and to your people that are all here at the meeting. I've known Lori and Gary McAfee for many years. Like she said, she knew me when I was 14, my family. I'm 44 now, so, you know, that's been a long time. You know, Lori and Gary first started on Wind River doing activities and engaging with our youth and our children, and, you know, always provided meals for our people. And, you know, they are Christian. And like he said today, Oglala Lakota is a way of life. And they just share the love that they have for their way of life also. And they don't oppose it on anybody. And I come today because the person that is mentioned, that is in question, the investigation that will come, the brochure that was circulated, that is, I come today to let the council know that as a close friend of theirs, they have no affiliation with this person. They saw the brochure for the first time that you all saw it. And so, you know, Lori and Gary have provided, like I know they have here for Wind River. I was chairman during the pandemic, and they were able to help feed us, our families, and deliver food to the reservation, and also supplies in many different forms of hygiene, water. Also, they, you know, have given furniture, just different basic needs that our people need here and in the country, you know. And so today, you know, again, I say with the most deep respect that I come today to speak on their behalf, as a friend and as a tribal leader, that they mean no harm. That, you know, they provide activities and work with the children, you know, they minister, you know, but it's based on the life of Jesus Christ. And it's not to force any kind of religion on anyone. It's just to share the love that they have, you know, for Christianity. And so I just say that on your behalf, and I thank you all for allowing me to come and speak on their behalf. With that, Madam Vice President, I yield.
Thank you, Councilman Spoon Hunter. Yes, Councilman Yellowboy?
You know, I think we have some youth that stepped up to the table, so we can hear from there and.
Sounds good, yeah. If you want to state your name, or? Do you want them to finish?
No, I just wondered if they're done after 10 minutes. That's what I was asking.
We don't have a sergeant here taking time. I will start right now. But it was 10 minutes? Okay, so that was 10 minutes. The secretary is taking time for me, so thank you. Councilman Yellowboy did say he would turn it over to the youth. I see you raising your hand, but they did turn it over to the youth first. So if you want to come up, Mr. Star comes out, and then we can, you can get the floor after the youth. So we're gonna turn it over. If you want to state your name for the record, and if you want to state your district or whatever, and then you'll have your 10 minutes, and you turn on the mic just by pressing the button.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Philip Ironshell. I work at the International Indigenous Youth Council. And I'm gonna speak what I have to say about how we got these pamphlets and why we brought them to, or why we put it out to the people. And then we're gonna move on to what these ladies have to say. So the way that I got these pamphlets was through one of my friends. He owns a company, a contracting company, where they do floors for other people. And so he was doing, so he went to do this job, and he was working at Matthew Monford. was working at Matthew Monfor's house. And so while he was there at Matthew Monfor's house, he, he realized that they were all Native American. And so that's when Matthew stuck around, which is kind of unusual for when we do that kind of job, because usually nobody's home. So he stuck around and he was preaching everything in this pamphlet to, to.
Hello, I'm counsel. Just coming late. Yeah.
Councilman, can you mute yourself, please?
Oh.
My apologies. Go ahead.
Yeah, so he was there preaching this pamphlet to them and basically saying everything that's in this pamphlet. And be, and them working, you know, they want to be professional and not want to be enraged or have any types of feelings. There are aggression towards him. And so they stayed professional and, and then they brought these pamphlets to me, knowing that I am a, that I'm an organizer. And so the things that they were telling me was that he did go to the Dream Center on Tuesday at 8:30 o'clock to do a seminar for the students that were there. And I think that's the group that was there and they left this last week, which is what they told us while we were over there. And so Matthew is the one that told them that directly. And Matthew is the one that gave these pamphlets to this group directly. And then that's where I got the original ones, was from that group that Matthew associated with. And yeah, I guess that's all I gotta say for now. And then we'll move on to the, to these ladies.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, council? He has seven minutes left, so it's totally up to you guys. Or do we want to hear from more of the youth? Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Tyler Star Comes Out. I'm coming from the Oglala District. I just wanted to say, we all know that churches have always played a violent role in our communities and to our peoples, and it's in our own history. And today, I, we come to you as youth and young adults with the main objective, and that is to decolonize mind, heart, spirit, space, land, and knowledge. We take pride in our identities. We are Lakota, and it's time to return to our ways. We don't need any more assimilation. We don't need any more churches. We don't need your God. And we are angry, but also heavy-hearted, because why is this still happening? Do you see the way these people talk to our parents and to our elders? And can you imagine what they say to our children and behind closed doors? And as far as I know, as a young Lakota woman, we have no devil in our culture, while Shichu brought that to us. And reading these pamphlets, it says that Tunquashila is a devil? What does that even mean? And why would they preach that? And I sit here in a room full of adults. Everyone in this room has preached at least three times that they are here for the people. Otherwise, why are you all on council? And if you are for the people, you'll listen to our propositions because we deserve to be heard.
How midakapi, Eleanor Ferguson-Munchapi. My name is Eleanor Ferguson, and I am a youth mentor for the International Indigenous Youth Council, Oglala Lakota Chapter. The International Indigenous Youth Council is a huge network of indigenous youth who are spread across Turtle Island, taking, creating social change in indigenous communities. So today, I represent all indigenous youth who are taking a stand out there, fighting for our way of life, bringing our way of life back. And so today, the youth are here to release a statement on behalf of the Tietomah Oglala Lakota people. I want to acknowledge that the Tietomah Oglala Lakota are free and equal to the US government. We are a sovereign nation. It is for the people to decide what goes on within Oglala Territory, especially when it comes to our children. Our nation is currently living in the aftermath of a cultural genocide that was committed by the Catholic Church and the US government, who yet still need to be held accountable for their actions. Our way of life has been under attack since Christopher Columbus stepped foot on Turtle Island and asserted the doctrine of discovery upon our indigenous nations. The doctrine of discovery gave the church the authority to justify murdering and raping our women and children, colonizing and desecrating our sacred lands in the name of Jesus Christ. Not one follower of the Catholic or Christian Church has or will go to heaven until this vile genocide is fully acknowledged and ended. Christianity and Catholicism did not become a major religion for the quality of its teachings, but by the quantity of its violence. We cannot forget the stolen children who are still buried near residential boarding schools. These children died in the hands of priests and nuns. These children died because they refused to assimilate into the Western world. And we can't forget the children who survived this cultural genocide, who are now elderly warriors living today and suffering from the horrific trauma that was caused by the church and US government. Our elders pass this trauma on to the next generation, and they pass it on to the next. So now we are all living with some form of generational trauma. And that generational trauma is the reason why we all, why we, the Oglala Lakota people, have the highest suicide rates in the country. It's the reason why our people are dying at a higher rate than anyone else in this country. It's the reason why 12- and 13-year-olds are in the streets shooting up heroin and meth because they can't find a reason to live. It's the reason why our people are raping children. Our people are lost because they're disconnected from Unchima Khan, our way of life. We're at a point in time where we, as a collective, either revive our Lakota way of life, or the next generations will lose it forever. Which is why we are here to demand the Oglala Lakota sue tribal council to take immediate action against all churches and missionaries on our territory who are using impoverished children for financial gain. If the Oglala Sioux tribe fails to do so, the people will take this task upon ourselves and remove them. We can no longer allow these people to operate on our territory until the church has been held accountable for the mass genocide they've committed against indigenous nations. Before I end this, I would like to speak on behalf of the Little family. Last night, they reached out to a council member to let him know that their young boy committed suicide after Lori McCaffey, owner of the Dream Center, humiliated him and bullied him in front of everyone at her missionary for accidentally throwing a water balloon at her. He went home that same night and killed himself. The family has been fighting for justice for years, but they gave up because nobody cared. The Dream Center has a long history of mistreating our children. Nobody should be defending these individuals. Stories are still coming out about the Dream Center, and you guys need to take the time to read them, to listen to the people, the children who were affected by these folks sitting here. And if we need to bring the Little family here to defend the little boy who killed himself, then so it be. But no little boy should be humiliated by an outsider to the point where he feels like he needs to take his life. And if you guys want to stand for that, then that just shows who you really are as a Lakota person. You're assimilated. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience? Yes, ma'am. State your name, please. And I believe there's some open mics.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernadine Redbear. I am a member of the Oglala Sioux tribe here. I'm 71 years old. I've been enrolled at birth, when I was born here in Penridge. And my mother is from Rosebud. She is Christine Crowdog. And in this pamphlet, I see that Crowdog is mentioned in this pamphlet. That's the reason why me and my brother and my sister came here. And my Uncle Leonard, I passed away last year, June 5th, May 2021. And he was a medicine man. He was a medicine man from the Sichul, Rosebud Sioux tribe. And I grew up with the Crowdog family, since my mother is a Crowdog. We spent a lot of time in Rosebud, in ceremonies. I grew up with what the Lakota way of life is like, and what they do, what they practice. I grew up with the language. I'm a fluent speaker of the Lakota dialect. And so is my parents. My dad is from here. He is Albert Redbear, Senior, from the Pass Creek District. We have land there. So we are members of the Oglala Sioux tribe. But we spend a lot of time there in Rosebud because of my uncle being a medicine man. And I read here on this pamphlet that, that he, that he admitted to be an alcoholic and all, all this other stuff that, that they talked about him that way. I just wanted to address this, being a medicine man. Uncle Leonard was really a kind-hearted person, as, as being a medicine man. He helped everybody that came to him for medicine, for prayers. And because he is, he was raised, the Lakota way of life, why? Is because my mother and her older brother and her sisters were all raised into St. Francis Indian School back in the 1930s. But her older brother was killed at that school by the Catholic Church. And when my grandparents wanted to find out what happened, how did he get killed? What happened? And they didn't want to answer. Instead, they kicked him off of that church, away from there. So my grandparents moved, what they called in Rosebud, paradise, Crowdog's paradise. That's where they lived, and that's where they start practicing the Lakota way of life. They went back to their old ways. When the whole reservation there were colonized, they were all Christianized by the Catholic Church. So that's where this Lakota way of life grew from there, from my uncle, from my grandparents, from my parents. And they practiced it every day. The language was used in the home where there was no English language. So that's the reason why I'm, I'm a fluent speaker. And as far as I could remember, Uncle Leonard was, he prayed with everybody, even Christians, even Christians. He invited them. And he asked them, he, he told them to come over. Yeah, let's pray together. Tell me about your religion. I want to know. See, he, he wanted to know so he could have peace and pray with his peace pipe peacefully, because that's what that peace pipe, the protocols of that peace pipe is, you have to get along, you have to have peace with everybody before you can even load it and pray with it. So this is the reason why he wanted to know. He wanted to find out about the Christian religion. And I have a question for this group here, the, the Christian religion. If you wanted to save me, how would you do it? What kind of a message would you give me instead of saying all these things that the God that I pray to is idol, is a demon idol, the way my prayers are all demons? Because the, the word Tunquashila means grandfather. So the, the, when they say Tunquashila, they're referring to the Greek spirit, God in heaven. They're referring to him in the Lakota language. And that's how they identify him. That's how they talk to him. They address, they take their prayers to him in that way. So the word Tunquashila says here, demon idol. That, where did that come from? And why? Why is it put it, put in that, in that way, in that form? To say those things because it's outrageous to say that to the Lakota oyate, to say that to them. If you do not understand our language, you shouldn't even make statements in that form or say anything in that way. You have to know, if you're gonna be on this reservation and teach the Christian way of life, the love of God. I believe in Jesus Christ. I believe in him because I know. I read the Bible, too. I know. I know about him. What he says is he, Jesus says, go out and teach them, the whole world of me. Tell them that I love them and that I am coming soon. I don't think he even, he never said anything like that to anyone. He never said a, well, hey, you know what, you're, you're this person, you're that person, and this is the way you believe, this is the way. That's not a way of self, trying to save somebody, of saving the soul. So this is the reason why I'm, I wanted to bring this up to you. And I wanted to know, what day do you worship the Creator? What day? Can you answer me? What day do you go to church?
I cannot speak for that brochure. I hear a lot of false accusations against myself and against the Dream Center. I have no idea what is in that brochure. I read the first few lines and I was appalled. The man has never been to the Dream Center, ever. He never did a seminar there. He posted on his website that he had never been to the Dream Center, so I don't know how you missed it. And I don't know why the Dream Center has been involved. I don't know why this has happened. I hear a lot of false stuff, and we have not been able to defend ourselves. And the question that you asked is, I cannot save anyone. The Dream Center can't save anyone. Everyone has to work out their own spirituality. We have the drum played at the Dream Center. We have tribal leaders come to the Dream Center from different reservations, because we do work on four reservations and help the people. I have no idea about any of what's in that brochure, but I can tell you, the only thing that can save is love. And when you love, then people can feel it. And that's what the Dream Center is about. I have never met these youth here. They have never come to the Dream Center. I've had thousands of teenagers that I travel with and that I take and I've helped. Kids that have gone to New Jersey to high school that we put hosting families. And I sit here and I listen to this. I have no idea who, they're talking about water balloons, because we don't use water balloons. That's one of the rules at the Dream Center. They're not allowed water balloons. So I have no idea what you're talking about. But you can say anything to anybody. You can post anything and people believe it. All I know is God sent us here to love the people. And we were not just, we didn't just come. And I see a lot of people come. But I've been here 21 years, and now all of a sudden, this is happening? We came here in 2001, when nobody was there, like the gentleman here said. There was nobody here, but there's a lot of people here now. And every time somebody does something, they, they look to the Dream Center like we did something wrong. And I'm sorry that this has happened, but we never came here to interfere in culture. We never came here to preach anything. I'm Lebanese. I was raised Lebanese. My father does different culture. I respect culture because I still practice my culture. And so I don't know where this is coming from. I don't understand the hate that is destroying the children. We've had hundreds, and I mean literally hundreds of calls from families that wanted, wanted to know why our bus wasn't picking up the kids. You have the wrong idea about us and who we are. And I think it's time that you And I think it's time that you find out who we are. I have a whole file here of who we are. Your culture was beautiful, but it's being destroyed by hate.
Ma'am?
Okay.
I'm going to stop you right there because it was her time. And I do know you, we've been asked, I've been asked if you can respond. So I want to give you one more minute to wrap up. I know you did ask him a question, you gave him the floor. And you've been saying some amazing things. So I want to give you one more minute because we have a lot of people here and this is an amazing discussion. And I think these discussions should continue. But we have other business to get to today and tomorrow. But I do know this is an important topic and we want to hear from you. So I'll give you another minute or two to wrap up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my question was, you are a Christian entity, right? Okay. And I just asked, the question was, what day do you worship Jesus Christ? What day?
And we're also a South Dakota relief agency as well, so, but we worship every day.
So you, do you have a particular day of church that you, is there a particular day that you worship?
We're not a church.
Okay, okay. So this person, Matthew Manford, Manfer? You don't know him?
I do not. He is Baptist and we are not Baptist. We're non-denominational.
And did he use you, your name, you people to put this out?
Absolutely not.
So where did this come from?
I was blindsided one morning. I had no idea. I got messages from all of the people wanting to know. I have no idea. It was Eleanor Ferguson who posted that it came from the Dream Center.
And would you say the same things he did about our people?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I have never done, we've been here 21 years and the people that know us know we would never do this.
Say these same things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to question.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Councilwoman Whitehorse, Councilwoman Carlo, and then, did I see another council member's hand? Councilman Yellowboy. So Councilwoman Whitehorse.
I would like to yield the floor to Mrs. Tobacco.
Hi, my name is Franciska Tobacco. I just want to make a statement real quick on behalf of our Sundance at Retro Table. We still don't know who destroyed our Sundance. And after seeing this, after seeing this pamphlet, I realize that these people really hate us and that they could have possibly did this. That's why we're not having Sundance this year. Just wanted to let everybody know that we still have no idea who done that. And this man right here, this man, just showing how much of hate that they have for us. And I really wish that everybody could just see that we really need to go back to our traditional ways and get all of these churches off of our reservation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council, I just wanted to make you aware that I did see that there was a motion made at one of our council meetings to have the BIACI investigate that. I don't know if it reached them, but I was going through my email and I came upon it that the secretary had asked Ms. DeVille from the BIA for Mr. Lopez's, Mr. Tina Lopez's information to send on that action to them. I reached out to Mr. Lopez to follow up and he noted that he did not receive it. So I did send him the action and he said they would start to look at that. So Ms. Tobacco, just so you're aware, we have forwarded that on to the BIACIs for investigation. We apologize it's taking long. Apparently it didn't get there, but I did follow up on that and it is there now. So we'll keep you posted on what they find for that. So thank you, Councilwoman Whitehorse. And we had Councilwoman Carlo and then Councilman Yellowboy.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I was going to yield the floor to Cliff and Myron.
How may Doc Yapi, Myron Puyer, Hamilone Lexi here, Clifton De Sersa. On that pamphlet, we noticed, talked about our grandfather, great-grandfather and great-great-grandfather, Hehakasapa Black Elk. And so we come here today and talk a little bit about our grandfather. Our grandfather, he had a vision, if any of you Wasechus, white people, non-members in this room have ever read Black Elk Speaks, it talks about his vision of all that is, coming together as one, all my relations, mitak ye o yase. It talks about the four-legged, the winged, the two-legged, all that grows. The universe, dakashila wama hoganaka, star nations, coming together under that flowering tree of life. To say those kinds of things about our grandfather and his vision and to talk about Gakka Crow Dog, another medicine man, who was hunkered into the Hehakasapa family by our grandfather Ben Black Elk in his 60s as his grandson, is wrong. To have any type of church entity come on this reservation regardless of the denomination you are, you have to accept who we are as a people and our spirituality as a nation. Just like Madam Vice Chair said earlier, we're born in Lakota, we're going to die in Lakota. Because the state of South Dakota is denying Oshetti Shalkowi curriculum does not mean that these individual organizations living within our exterior boundaries of our treaty territory, of the original treaty territory, does not have to abide. If you're going to live on this reservation, practice our ways and who we are as a people and respect that. Otherwise, we ask you to pack up and leave. You may have been here 21 years, but it is who you let on your compound who does not come in with a good heart. You may have a good heart. We don't know that. We never met you. But we're meeting you now. Now your words are kind because you're in front of council. What's going to happen when you walk out that door? Are you even listening to us? Are you going to implement practices, new procedures to learn about our spirituality? Know your boundaries when you're on this reservation. If you've got nothing good to say about my grandfather or Gakka Crow Dog, don't mention it. Keep them out of your mouth, as well as any spiritual leaders here on this reservation. My grandfather mentored a lot of different medicine men who made their journey home now. They're on the other side. And our ancestors walk with us every day and our ancestors are in this room with us today now. And those that he mentored that went home, their altars are still going today and they're still going strong. In 1905, our grandfather was baptized in the Catholic Church down at Red Cloud. And honestly, what's going on today in the Catholic Church and what's being brought to surface, I don't think my grandfather would want to have gotten baptized. He never put his chenupa down, which you call a peace pipe. That's our prayer pipe. He always walked with it and had ceremonies, even when ceremonies were banned. He still doctored the people. He couldn't read or write English. He couldn't speak it. So as far as him knowing about the Bible and what it said, that was told to him by his son Ben, who was forced to go to school in Carlisle at a young age where he could read and write and do arithmetic. Those are the requirements at that time. So when he come back, he told his grandpa, he read the Bible to his grandfather, his dad, Black Elk. When he had that vision and nine years old on top of Black Elk Peak, Hehakasapa Paha, it was in 1872. When the Lakota had their vision, they followed through with that vision, their life way. And his whole message and that vision was to live as one nation under that flowering tree of life. So I ask that we as a people and that you as a group and any other future groups come in, don't discredit our spirituality. We're still Lakotas. Our youth are leaders, future leaders of tomorrow. They're wakanya'ja. They're sacred. They're still connected to the other side and they will be. Bring people in that are Lakota in all these ways, spirituality, and talk with them. And let them teach our own youth. Don't overstep your boundaries because you're living in Lakota territory. Respect us as a people and respect one another. You say love, then show us love. You say respect, show us respect. You say compassion, be compassionate. Because that's who we are as a people, to be a good neighbor. The philosophy of our way of life, mitak ye o yase. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lexi here, Clifton.
About my grandfather, a long time ago, you know? And they say he had a racist vision and that's the way this organization talks. And what do they know about somebody's vision? When you, when you go humbletta, that's your vision. It's not what they come in and tell you that your vision is wrong or, you know, it's racist. Because I don't know who would be racist against that other than the white people. And to say that is wrong because when he had his vision, probably none of us were here. And whether it was racist back then, it was, I think it was between, between the soldiers and the warriors fighting back then. And that, and that was war, you know? That, that, that wasn't considered as racism. And so this organization does not have the right to say his vision was racist. And then he prayed to Tonkashila, who they say is a demon. So they say that he's a follower of that demon. And that's not right because that's not our way of life. And in my mind, I just, when that came up, I just said, to have them just take all of them. Because if you have one person leading, then all the followers are going to still, still follow that person. So if you kick one off, he can, he can still run, run the church off, from off this reservation. Because from what I heard about him was that he's the one that built that church. So they're still operating under him. And if this council is here, they would remove the staff and everybody else off the reservation and keep them from putting our children over there. And teaching them their, their way of life and not ours. And being that they're against us, that's what I'd ask this council to do.
I guess the last thing I want to say is, Council, you've got a serious decision ahead of you here. Whatever decision you make today, tomorrow, the coming weeks, is going to set a precedence for not only those that are still here, but incoming organizations that prey off to save the Indian and kill, kill the Indian and save the man concept. Millions and millions of dollars are going to still come through this reservation, but not through our tribe. It's going to come through directly to these organizations. And how many times have these organizations reported their financials to you on an annual basis, semi-annual basis? So dakashila wanka tonka wochekeayo. The tribal council and give them strength to understand the seriousness of the decision they're going to make. Just like Lexi here said, you make it for one, that's going to set a precedence for the others. I keep you in my prayers. I keep this meeting in my prayers and everybody that come here today, that good will come out of it in the end. Everything we do as a Lakota in the beginning, we do it with a prayer. It's like before tribal council started, there was a prayer. And we leave it up to the Creator when we're done. No matter what you want to call your Creator, God, Jesus, Buddha, Allah, whatever you want to call Him, I call Him wanka tonka, dakashila wanka tonka, omakayo. Because only He can help us. Only He can help me. So good luck in your decision you make and I hope your decision is the best for our people. Mitak ye o yase.
Thank you, Mr. Puyer. Just so everyone is aware, we do hear everybody. That's why we're opening it up. It's an important discussion for all of us to have. Also want to note that we did make a motion to investigate. So that will be coming back on the 10th of next month. So there is going to be investigation and figuring out what, how this all transpired, who Mr. Moffett is associated with and whatnot. So I just wanted to clarify that, that that investigation will be happening. We have Councilman Puyer. Are you still, do you still have the floor? Do you have other folks? Okay. So Councilman Puyer, we're going to let Councilman Yellowboy finish. So Councilman Puyer, we're going to let Councilman Yelboy finish.
Actually, I was after Councilwoman Carlos, so.
Oh. Okay, okay. I lost track. My apologies. Go ahead, Councilman Yelboy.
Yeah, I'm maintaining my place behind the Councilwoman. So with that, I'd like to yield the floor to my Lexi Earl Paul.
How I'm better still. Done up at you the, I'm there. Koka wogalake shnehani lel. Crow dog, tita kuya, wankolele njeke. Oganata kuliachi secha Albert. Takuli hayachiya. Yowalecha. We have another one of Crow Dog's relatives here and I'd like to, before I say anything, I'd like rather have him talk first.
Ahoo. Yauakini napé. Ah, ochuswapelo. I just want to greet you at this time with a good heart. Before I say anything to the council here, like he said, we're the Ogallala Crow Dogs here. And we're here to support our relatives, relations, and spiritual way of living and the belief. As a Lakota person, we have a language, we have a culture, we have land, we have everything that the Creator gave us here. We're sitting on gold, we're sitting on water, we're sitting on everything that the Creator gave us to the Lakota people. And there Lakota speaks the language. We're the right-brained people. Lakoti yapiata. On the other hand, the washichuheina, they're the left-brained people. We're not together. We have a separate entity of this land here. So with that, whatever that's been saying with the left-brained people, they're the homeless people. Homeless people bring their textbook religion to our culture, to our attention. I try not to mix myself with left-brained religion textbook. I study my own spirituality, the Creator, tokashila kontika. We have visions, we have dreams. We never, we don't talk to that book. We have other things important. Who we are as religious people. And I was really sad by what was said to our spiritual people, our belief, our way of life, that we're part of the devil. I said, well, we don't, the way the old people have taught me, the Lakota people, they don't have a hell. We have a happy hunting ground. The religious people are the ones that have a hell. We don't know the devil. We always preach everything with the seven divine laws that the woman that brought the pipe to us, we have that, we believe in that. And that's the real power that we have as Lakota people. So I just wanted to encourage all the young people. We didn't receive the land from our ancestors. We receive it from our children. This is their, this is their future. We're just bridging ourselves to accommodate our ways of life, to pass it on, our right brain, to pass it on to our young people so to be able to live. We've been living like this for centuries. Biblical religious is just a new thing to us. It damaged a lot of our people. Not only us, the Ogallala Lakota, but other nations that I went to visit. They're damaged for generations. They couldn't come back together. The only way they came back together was through a Sunday spirituality, the right-brained spirituality. They became who they are again. They have their own belief. They start to talk their own language. They start to pray in the Lakota language like that. So I have witnesses, a lot of things that took place when the religious people came here. We're not religious, we're spiritual people on the right brain, like that. We know the difference. Who we are as religious people. At this time, I just want to thank all my relatives here, the Ogallala people. My grandfathers came with crazy horse. Crazy horse, red bear, high horse and black fox that came from Yellowstone. And they put my grandpa here at Allen. So we're not really Ogallalas, we're not Pine Ridgeers, we're from, we come from a different area at that time, so we report here. We're Wajaje. The seven tribes of the Ogallalas, like that. Ahoo, mitaku yasi.
Okay, I was la nozikte. Then lela osicha. Twenilakhotyeshni. Ta'al washichuasnuvunglakam. I'm sorry we have to use the English language. There's a lot of meanings when we talk. I just wanted to bring up a little bit about the Episcopal. My grandma grew up as an Episcopal. And she died as an Episcopal. I went to church as a young boy. And everything what these, the lay reader was a Lakota. These prayer books were in Lakota. Those hymenols were in Lakota. And they never condemned who we were. And then today, now we're at a crossroads where we're condemned for being who we are. Because these guys could look at you and tell you, you know, back in the days, our grandfathers said, those were, they speak with forked tongue. These guys say the church of their religious people. And yet they lie. All these religions, when they go to the communities, my grandkids come back from these churches when they feed them. They tell us what these people say and how they condemn us for who we are. But it's not only this group. It's all these other groups that are coming into our communities. And I have a lot of grandkids who go to these feeds that they put on. And when they come back, these are the things that they tell me. I had some of my grandkids sent back because they wouldn't, they didn't know the songs or they wouldn't sing because they didn't know the songs they were sent home. My, one of my grandsons said, met his little brother, he said, he didn't know how to sing either, but he wanted a candy bar, so he's just mouthing the words, lip syncing for a candy bar. I never said nothing about religions before. There was an elderly gentleman who helped pull me up on a hill. And he was also a lay reader. And he said, don't ever talk bad about other religions because no matter what, we all look up and we pray. And so with that, I've never said anything. But it's coming to a, you know, it's time to speak up. Where, I heard on the news Friday or the council meeting, you guys were worried about somebody's rights being violated. And I remember not too long ago, same bunch here, one that does to take on the drug dealers and kick them off the reservation. You didn't care about their rights. But now we're concerned about Washichu's rights. If I, if I, if I, if you guys look at that treaty, and first of all, before that treaties were even signed, we were always here as Lakota people. And that's why we talk about our way of life. But this treaty, it says that there's that bad man's clause in there. And that treaty was signed by our, by our grandfathers. I don't think I have a grandfather that was part of that, but it's here. And we abide by these treaties. There's a lot of people that are non-treaty signers also. But that bad man's clause, that belongs to the people. We don't need to wait for no courts. If there's a bad man amongst us, why are we going to, why are we going to make sure his rights are not violated? We need to get rid of them. I get tired of listening to people saying stuff and then nothing's been done about it. We had a, one of our relatives killed in Pine Ridge not too long ago. And I don't know what we're going to do about that. We had a young person shot in Number Four area. And I don't know what's been done about that either. So something's better be done about this. Because we are going to have to take everything into our own hands. And I'm going to tell you guys, you need to get ready and move out. We don't want your kind here anymore. Maybe if, maybe you came down to save these guys, you can take them back to Wyoming with you. Something better be done. Because we're not going to put up with this anymore. Thank you for listening to me.
Councilman Puyer?
Select one of district members?
How madakyapi, chanté washte, na chusapi. Chelsea Felicia Amachiapi, na lakotaja ki, wanashka ho washtewi. Hahisinte awati. To my elders, forgive me for speaking before you. I'm here today to speak on the behalf of my grandpa Russell Means. He is a member of the Porcupine District.
While she's getting herself together, I have a question for Mr. Spoon Hunter from Wyoming. Back when, I think the Dream Center was chartered in Wyoming under Wings as Eagles or something like that? When I was a fifth member at the time when they came down from Wyoming. And I call, the rumor was, I always say it's a rumor because I didn't have it in nothing in writing. Thank you, sir, for making the noise. But I heard rumored that Wings as Eagles were, ran off of reservations. And I had the BIACIs checking it out. They never did find out, get back to me. I also called the tribal offices up there. They transferred me here, they transferred me there pretty soon. I hung up. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? Is it true or false that what went on up there?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Councilman, when they were there, they met a member of your tribe and that's how they got involved here. They were with us for a long time and they had good relations in Wyoming. And they met a member of your tribe and he invited them here.
Grandpa Russell Means was a district member of Porcupine. I see his name on this pamphlet with the false accusations. In 1973, him and many other AIM members fought for the right of our traditional ways of life. Like Gunji said before, before me, Grandpa Russell, or Grandpa Crow Dog respected the Christian way of life because we all had to come together. Which was right. But when they turn around and say these false things about them, we have to turn to our own traditional ways of life. The Lakota way of life, Tokashila is not a demon. Grandpa Russell always believed in the traditional way of life. It helped him. Same with Grandpa Russell. Or Grandpa Leonard. Grandpa Leonard was never an alcoholic, as it says in this pamphlet. Grandpa Leonard was never an alcoholic, as it says in this pamphlet. Grandpa Crow Dog lived this way of life from the beginning to the end of his journey. I do not agree with this pamphlet because it's all false accusations about our relatives. Grandpa Crow Dog and Grandpa Russell Means aren't here with us today. But I stand up here to defend their names and their legacy. They were both AIM leaders. I do not like when people make up false accusations about my grandpas, Russell Means and Leonard Crow Dog, Chief Leonard Crow Dog. And to disrespect their way of life is a big no. Because remember, you're on our land. During the summer, these church camps go around talking to the children, talking to them, taking them on field trips and everything like that. Yeah, that's a good thing, but from all the trauma that the churches caused us from residential (speaking in Lakota) Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, I do believe we do, we did receive the resolution that was requested for today. So we do have that to be read. So Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, and then we'll get to reading the resolution. I just wanted to let people know that we appreciate your comments, we appreciate you coming here, we understand this is an issue that all of us is, it's near and dear to us, it's who we are. Um, so we want to thank you guys for your, your thoughts today and for, for your prayers too, today. Um, and we, we want you to know that there, there was a motion earlier made to have an investigation that's coming, um, again on, on August 10th for a special council meeting. We will let you know what is found in that investigation. And, um, we do have a resolution, uh, coming up here to look at those, um, to do an application for all the, I believe it's the missionaries, we'll, we'll read the resolution here, but that is coming up as well. So there is some action that will be taken. So Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, yield the floor to one of our district members, Mr. Sam Long.
So I'm gonna tell you guys this in English so we all understand. Here we are, you know, we have school boards across the reservation, we have a Board of Education on the Oglala Sioux Tribe, we, we also have a Bureau of Indian Education on the Bureau of Indian Affairs side. We have all of these things set in place to protect our children. We have them all set there. We, uh, make sure that all the teachers pass background checks, federal background checks. We make sure them, they all do that in order for them to step foot and teach our children. These church groups are not held to the same scrutiny as that, as, as these schools. Yet, our communities trust them to get on them buses, to go to these churches unsupervised. We went to that Dream Center over there. No cameras in the building, no cameras outside the building, firearms sitting inside their office. And it wasn't a good situation, it wasn't a good feeling. The Tukala Okola Kiche walked through there, and that's what we witnessed. You heard from our International Youth Council, and I wanna, I wanna acknowledge them and I wanna say thank you. Took a lot of courage to stand up and come up here and speak to, to each and every one of you, as well as the listening audience out there. So now we're dealing with jurisdictional issues. I am a Titwan Oglala Lakota, and Unkiapi Letchea Naji, Letchea Huitaki. We're all Titwan Oglala Lakota. The treaty belongs to us. Below that treaty is the Oglala Sioux Tribe, and that's this council. So whenever we speak like this, you're hearing straight from the Titwan Oglala. And we're expecting a lot of actions, just like you guys, um, said you're gonna do, these We have to follow these. We have to find the right entity to accept these. And right now, what's going on? This Matthew Monfro, or whatever his name is, he lives off of the reservation. These church groups are lying when they tell you they don't have any affiliation with them. It's just like any other church, they pay ministers to come in and preach their gospel. So they do have affiliations with them. Our children witnessed them inside them churches. All of the, all of our people out there witnessed them. If Mr. Spoon Hunter from the Northern Chi, or Northern Apoh reservation is part of them, you know, they held their horses during Battle of Greasy Grass. So they're kind of our allies, but they don't have to tell us the truth either. So these, these churches right here, sitting here and lying to our faces, they have to be held accountable. These jurisdiction issues that I'm talking about is the Bureau of Indian, the BIA road that runs right through the Dream Center, both of them. They're both called the Dream Center. So this jurisdictional issue that runs right through them is the Bureau of Indian Affairs Road, and then that's deeded land, however they got it. That deeded land sits right smack dab in the middle of our reservation. Oglala Lakota County Sheriff really can't do anything about it. We run into that jurisdictional issue in Bennett County, something that I was trying to fight for. So this jurisdictional issue should be handed to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. There should be a whole audit. What our children are saying also to you is to suspend all missionary activities on this reservation until every missionary activity on this reservation falls into the line with federal background checks. On each and every person that's teaching, driving, and coming into our contact with our, with our children. There's been a time limit, two weeks. Two weeks is what you guys said you guys are gonna come back to the people with. And we're trusting you with that. We're trusting you with two weeks. We only want peace. We only want peace. We also want safety for our children. We're battling this devil on many, on, on many fronts, in our homes, in our communities, on our council, in our public safety. All across our reservation, we're battling this devil. So two weeks, you know, we don't want them on this reservation either, I don't want them on this reservation either. It's a form of genocide. At the beginning of this administration, I introduced you guys to the Papal Bulls and the doctrine of discovery, which lost 80% of the interest. Everybody got up and walked away and didn't pay attention to it. I knew there was gonna be a spiritual battle coming here. The spiritual battle is here. The doctrine of discovery states that any Christian missionary discovers a land without a God, they're able to stab their cross into the hearts of these people and convert them to missionary, uh, Christians. These savage heathens, incompetent of understanding, incompetent of holding governments, incompetent of anything. And that's what's happening today. These Christian missionaries come into our communities and they stab their crosses and declare these little children godless heathens. They're going to hell. If they believe in Inipi, if they believe in our seven sacred rites, if they believe in We Wongwachipi, Humble Chiapi. If they believe in anything that I, that we identify as a human, they're going to hell. They're going home and they're crying to their parents because they don't wanna go to hell. They heard that someplace. Many years ago, when I was a little boy, I heard that too. My own color of my own people told me I was going to hell because of the scars on my chest. Those people are not around, not, not around anymore. And it's, and it's not right to speak ill of the dead. But I heard that growing up too. Now our children are under fire. You, the IRA government, it's your obligation to protect our children. Two weeks, I highly suggest suspension of all missionary action, activities across this reservation until these federal background checks come back. But what do I know? I'm not getting any money from them. There's millions and millions and millions of dollars pouring into all of these churches, 501(c)(3) programs. We're not getting any of it. You listen to those people standing right there. We were also there that day. They asked them where the money's going and she pointed at us. You guys are getting it. We're not getting any of it. I wouldn't take it if they even handed it to me. So I highly suggest that this investigation that the tribal council is going to do on this Dream Center gets handed over to the Federal Bureau of Investigation because right now, this investigation that you guys are gonna do is only gonna come up with one finding, he's not on this reservation. Boom, done, thrown out. It's hate speech, it's cultural genocide committed onto our children. So I wanna tell you that. Put it into the hands of the Federal Bureau of Investigation, suspend all missionary activities on this reservation until they comply with, with the application, the permission slip that you guys are handing out to them. Put that onto your permission slip. That's what I have to say.
Thank you for your time. Um, and just to clarify that, um, the fifth member is to take any action needed to do the investigation. So if it includes that, includes that. Um, so the fifth member is here, and I'm sure he heard. But we do have the resolution, which we talked about, the action. So Councilwoman Whitehorse, did you want to read that?
I just had it, let me pull it up again. Okay. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopting a registration process and registration form for all churches and missionaries to register and request authorization to conduct missionary activities on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, and by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article 3 of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas Article 4, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas in accordance to Chapter 10, Removal of Non-Members, Section 2M, that states that conducting missionary activities without prior authorization from the tribal council is grounds for exclusion of non-members. The Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has found it in its, found it in the best interests of the tribe to register all churches and missionaries conducting missionary activities within the reservation to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the people. And whereas the history of abuses by the churches upon indigenous peoples has caused generational trauma to indigenous peoples across the world. And whereas the traditional Lakota life ways and practicing of ceremonies were prohibited by the United States policies of assimilation and conversion causing significant and lasting damage to our tribal members, including to their identity as Lakota people. And whereas the 1868 Treaty and the American Indian Freedom of Religion Act of 1978 protect our way of life. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council has reviewed and approves the registration and request for authorization to conduct missionary activities form. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the registration and request for authorization to conduct missionary activities form. And be it further resolved that the tribal council delegates authority to the OST Executive Committee to review and approve of submitted forms, I should say approve or deny, of submitted forms to the secretary's office. With approval or denial done by executive committee, resolution attached to the form and filed with the secretary's office and copy given to the church or missionary organization. Um, before I take action, I, I think we should review the form itself. So I will open that up and go through that as well. Registration and request authorization to conduct missionary activities within the exterior boundaries of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. It has the date, the name of organization, I think it should also include the name of the organization. the name of the organization leader, address of the organization, area code and phone number of organization, name of contact person, including missionary leader. Can we add that part in as well? Area code and phone number of contact person, purpose of the organization, type of missionary activities that will be conducted while on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, location of activities while on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, proposed length of stay on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. I think here, we also need to add in that a background check shall be completed before approval on the leadership of the missionary organization. And then, we also need to add a piece in here on this form that a background check shall be completed on the missionary, I don't know, do you call them missionaries or missionary workers?
Like anyone involved with the organization?
Yes.
Coming onto the reservation?
Yes.
Forced admission?
Yes. That should be before the request to conduct missionary activities. And then, there's the portion where the Executive Board will approve or not approve and include the resolution. And then, the notice, "The Oglala Sioux Tribe has the inherent right to immediately remove from the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation any organization or person representing the organization that causes harm or is a threat to the health, safety, and/or general welfare of our people or fails to abide by tribal laws. The Oglala Sioux Tribe will not tolerate the demonization, denigration, or disrespect of our traditional life ways, our sacred rights, or our ceremonies from any organization or ministry and considers this type of activity as harmful to our people." So, after reviewing that and adding those amendments, Stacy, did you get all those amendments? Okay. Okay. Name of organization. And right after that, name of leader. Address of organization. That's okay. Area code, phone number, name of contact person, and leader of organization. So, the and leader. Area code and phone number of contact and leader of organization. Okay, that's okay. That's okay. And then, the final amendment would be that a background check will be submitted with this application prior to approval. And that background checks will be submitted on all missionary or organization personnel. And I think the rest is okay, but I think Tyler had a...
Yeah, we have a number of hands up. So, we have Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, Councilwoman Yellow Boy, and then Councilwoman Carlo, and then we have Councilman Canoyer. I'm sorry, did I miss you? Okay, so Councilman Puyer, Councilman Canoyer, and then we have Mr. Starr comes out in the audience too, if anybody would like to give him the floor.
Okay, I guess I was going to just say that maybe to add in the background checks. And so, I'm glad that Cora brought that up. But I think that needs to probably be added in there prior to the approval, I think, of the form, right? Yeah.
Yeah, she said that. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Yellow Boy, Councilman Carlo, Councilman Puyer, Councilman Canoyer, Councilman Steele, and then Mr. Starr comes out.
Mine will be three minutes, sorry. I guess if we can add another line in there, if they're going to be soliciting funds and what the funds are gonna be used for, and do you comply with a regular submission of what you bring in, a revenue report, financial report? Do you consent to it, yes or no?
Councilwoman?
I think that's fine, but you know, Ordinance eleven twenty-three, which is the UCC code, actually has nonprofits in there. And if they are raising money on behalf of the tribe, they're supposed to be reporting to the tribe's Department of Revenue and submitting yearly documentation. And I don't know how many are doing that, but maybe that portion needs to be there and attach Ordinance eleven twenty-three with the application.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, we have Councilman Carlo, Councilman Puyer, Councilman Canoyer, and then Councilman Steele, and then Mr. Starr comes up.
Councilman Ryan Jumpingale and I were discussing the same thing that Tyler brought up and we think that is imperative that we do put that in there, that, you know, all reporting, especially financials, are gonna be scrutinized by the Oglala Sioux Tribe, whether it be the revenue office or whatever department from the tribe.
Councilman Puyer?
I really think it should be an ordinance rather than a resolution because if we're gonna name that, because it'll be a law then, then name those other ordinances in this ordinance to be. Because I think there's another one anyway that revenue goes by that names the churches or nonprofits. They're already supposed to be doing something.
Yeah, I agree to that. And I thought that would have been incorporated in here from our discussions previously, but it wasn't. So, maybe that needs to be an amendment to the resolution. And, I mean, amend the resolution to an ordinance. And also to include Ordinance eleven twenty-three as the guide. Maybe we need to put it in a therefore be it ordained that according to Ordinance eleven twenty-three, if any financial transactions, i.e. fundraising, is taking place, that Ordinance eleven twenty-three must be adhered to and the organization is required to report to the OST Department of Revenue and submit yearly financial documents.
Can we take a break and you can have, what lawyer drafted this so we can get this straight while we're...
Can we get through the rest of the comments? I do like that. I like that and changing it, and that was amazing coming off the top of your head, Councilwoman. So, I don't know if Tomasina's on or if an attorney's on, but if you guys could pay attention to these changes, there's a couple more folks who have other additions, so appreciate it. So, we have Councilman Canoyer, Councilman Steele, Mr. Starr comes out, and Councilman Jumpingale.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Now, one question that we're discussing while we're discussing all this is whatever happened to the discussion on how we can trademark the Oglala Sioux Tribe? Because I'm pretty sure that would be a lot. That'd be very helpful. Where, I forget which attorney we passed to. Okay. Yeah. So, I'd just like to know where we're at as far as that discussion goes because it's directly relatable to this.
I think it's directly relatable, but it'll take time. So, I think if we can come back to it later or also bring it back to committee. So, where is it at then? Councilman Yellow Boy?
That's the question we have because we've taken action three separate times at three different meetings. And the people who made the motions were myself, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Puyer.
Legal did come off mute, so go ahead, Legal.
Hi, this is Tomasina. Can you hear me okay? So, it was assigned through EMB to me, and there were two tracks that I was working on. The first is the trademark of the Prairie Winds Casino. Both the logo as well as the casino sales. That was already trademarked back in, I don't have the file in front of me, when I wanna say two thousand twelve. And for some reason, it lost its trademark and is no longer registered. So, that one just needs to be resubmitted. And it's sort of gone on the back burner unfortunately, just due to other prioritized work. The other portion of the trademark work is to register the tribal insignia in the tribal insignia database. Neither of those are going to guarantee that folks don't use your insignias or symbols or logos, but they will have trademark protections. So, I did provide an update to EMB maybe two months ago or so. I'm happy to circulate that again, but it's just a pending project at this point still. And it is, you know, it is a little bit technical in that the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office, they have really specific requirements for when you do go to trademark. So, it's just in this pending process that it's being worked on.
Thank you, Attorney Real Bird, for the update. So, Councilman Canoyer, did you want to add anything in this application specifically or to this ordinance saying that they cannot use the name Pine Ridge Reservation or Oglala Sioux Tribe or anything like that? Is that kind of what you're getting to?
Madam Chair, when I made the original motion, it was to trademark the emblem, our flag, the term Oglala Sioux Tribe, the term Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, the term OST, and to start that project to trademark those entities. That way, this fundraising for churches and whoever else out there and whether five oh one c threes that are utilizing the tribe to fundraise to start that process so we can have some sort of legal remedy to soliciting funds from these other organizations off reservation and out of state.
Right, I understand that. But we'll have to figure out where that's at and what the ripple effects of that is. But specific to this ordinance, now that it's an ordinance, Councilman Canoyer, did you want to add that in there? Or did...
Yes.
Is that okay with the... Do we all get that? So, we wanna add that in there? About not using, do you wanna clarify, Councilman Canoyer, exactly what you want added in there?
I think that as soon as the trademark, all that information is trademarked, then we can add it to the ordinance. Because in the meantime, I think that we need to deal with what we have right now. I mean, because that issue has not been completed as of yet.
Yeah, I was just trying to connect the dots to the current ordinance, so...
But I would recommend that when it does come back, then we add it to this ordinance as well as eleven twenty-three. But there is also a portion in the UCC that mentions personal protections, which includes the tribes. So, maybe that needs to be researched by Tomasina and brought back. Maybe that might help with the trademark issue.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Councilman Canoyer?
Yes. I will make that motion whenever it comes time.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Canoyer. So, we have Councilman Steele, and then Mr. Starr comes out, and then Councilman Jumpingale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I cut out for whatever reason, go ahead and skip me. But, you know, I just totally disagree with this whole thing. It's like we're allowing our young people to assimilate and learn more about these ways where we're saying it's okay for these people to come into our homelands. I come from the Oyuthmay Band of the Oglala. You know, we're the non-Chi designers and we had a different belief. And, you know, I know our ancestors, our leaders would totally be opposed to this. And I just don't see myself supporting this. We should be more about preserving our own way of life, our own culture, our own language. You know, but instead, we're saying it's okay for these churches to come in, take our children and teach them, teach them this religion that don't belong to us. I don't, I don't know, man. It's just the days, it seems like we're losing more touch of who we are. And it's, to me, I just don't understand why we're doing this. When we talked on last, you know, bringing something, I thought it was to get rid of non-members. And I didn't understand that this was what was coming forth. And I just, I just don't see the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, you know, passing such a thing to allow our children to, you know, for these individuals to come in and take our children and teach them this religion. It just, I just don't support it. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr comes up.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Snare. Comes out, Oglala District President. I'm also a member of the Veterans Committee for the Oglala Sioux Tribe and also the Vice Chair for the Crazy Horse Planning Commission. One of the, to me, it seems like we already made our up our mind here, listening to all these talks here, you know. I have to agree with Wounded Knee, you know, it's, I think it's wrong, you know. Maybe you should let the people decide that, make that decision. Because, you know, it seems to me that a lot of decisions are made here without the people putting in, giving their input. And that's where we're going wrong. So, I just wanted to say that. Also, should you go with this resolution or whatever you're proposing here, make sure these people do not own land. They got very cocky with us Friday about them owning the land there. So, we need to protect the land. We need to protect the people. We need to protect the children. So, remember that. You know, let's stop dragging this on. Let's end it here. Be strong. Stand up for your people. Let the people decide. Oh.
Councilman Jumpingale?
Thank you. You know, I think included in that form that we should also include, you know, that they can't be exploiting our children on their, you know, their webpages and on their brochures and stuff. You know, that's one of the main ways that they get these donations is they put pictures of our children on them pamphlets and on their webpage. So, if there's somewhere in their corolla, we can include that on their webpage. I think that would be good.
So, just thinking about it and seeing the other documents from last week, do we wanna make a separate photo release? Because I know that in the one where it said, like, giving permission, there was also a photo release in there. But do we wanna add like a separate photo release? You know what I mean? So, it's not all-inclusive in what the permission slip or whatever it is? And do we want also them to turn in all their documents for whatever activities they have going? Just a thought, thinking about what you just said.
I think the form includes activities. And if fundraising is a part of that activity, maybe there needs to be a note that that has to be pre-approved before those campaigns go into effect. That way, we can make sure that people in our area and children are not being exploited.
Okay. That is the end of my list of hands up. Is there any other comments or questions from council? Is there any other comments or questions from Council? Yes, Councilman Iron Cloud?
I agree, I agree with, you know, the proposal to, I guess, to have a release, release of information, you know, or release of, if they're going to use a photo, photo of a child, because these things go nationwide, worldwide. And so I think that, you know, there should be a release of information or picture, picture of these children, because I've got a, I got a, some information here about, you know, about that young man that was, that was, that committed suicide, and apparently this church was using his name, you know, to raise money. And so I was, I was kind of concerned about that, and I think that they should have some type of release, and the parent, the parents are from my district and they're really upset. Thank you.
So a separate release of, for the photo specifically? Okay.
Yeah, to include prior approval of any, any activity, specific activity, whether it's for fundraising or information, that needs to be approved by executive board.
Sounds good, okay. Any other questions or comments, Council? Huh? I know, right? I, I hope the attorneys have been listening and making the list. We, we had a time for, do you want to give the floor, Councilman Watkins?
Yeah, I got elderly over there, been waving his hand, I'll give him the floor.
Thank you. My name is Ivan, Starr comes out. Bear with me, I can't talk like I used to. You know, we can do a lot of great things to, to protect our children from what's happening. But I really think that's some sort of ultimatum, or not ultimatum. What is that word they use in it? Anyway, on the sale of land to these organizations, to stop that. If we don't do that, things are going to continue. Stop the land of land sales, land to these groups. I know it's hard to do. Moratorium, I forgot the word. It's a minitorium words in my head. I know it'll take some work. But it can be done, I believe. And that should answer the question that I've heard asked here. Do we need these groups here? By placing a moratorium makes a, makes a really loud statement. And if we can do that, I think a lot of people will be happy. Lots of people who are with that. I thank you for allowing me the time.
Chairwoman, I'm just informed by advice here that he's an honorable man, also that he's a veteran. I think, you know, when the elderly like that, we ought to listen, we've got to look around, we have these people with their hands up, and we invited them here out of respect to let them talk.
Thank you for that. Yes, Councilwoman?
I, I would agree. I think that is a good idea. I'm not sure exactly how we do that, but I, I would like to make a motion that we place a moratorium on, on land sales to non-Indians and refer this issue to Land Committee. Or non-tribal members.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Yellow Boy, Councilman Iron Cloud, and Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? Councilman Steele, is your hand up on this motion by Councilwoman Whitehorse?
Uh, it's not, it's actually on the other issues, so I'll, I'll reserve my time.
Thank you. So seeing no other questions or comments on the motion made by Councilwoman Whitehorse, Madam Secretary, can you call a vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer, Junior? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellow Boy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior? Richard Iron Cloud?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlos, Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior? Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Craig Dillon? Mr. Hawkins, would you like to vote? Thank you.
This is Jackie. I lost connection there for a second, but my vote's on, ha.
Okay, thank you.
Council, that passes seventeen yes, two not voting. Yes, Councilwoman Whitehorse?
Um, I would like to request a break while Thomasina puts the amendments in.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll take, what, ten, five, ten?
I, Chair.
Yes, Councilman Steele, before we.
Yeah, I, I wanted to know, you know, about the enforcement. There's one thing that we lack, it's we don't have enforcement in our, in our ordinances that we create, and then it falls back in our laps. You know, let's say, you know, because I know I'm not going to support this, but what if an organization, you know, fails to comply with this, and, and then, you know, who's enforcing this, and how long? Is there like a timeframe they have to remove them off their reservation or whatever, you know, the, the situation may be, but I, I want to know about enforcement. And, and if there's a timeframe after they, they violate or they don't comply with this, this permission slip, you know, how, how much time do they have before they're removed?
Those are all great questions, Councilmen, and we'll think about that during our ten-minute break, and then we'll come back in ten minutes. So, what time is that? I don't have my, what time is it? So we'll come back at 3:41, Council, so it's food for thought while we take our break here. Thank you.